Folks, welcome. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of December 10th, 2019. Would you be kind enough, excuse me, to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Excuse me. Miles, if you'd be kind enough, if you could pan over to the screen for the folks at home so they can take a look at the agenda we'll be discussing this evening. I hope I don't cough through tonight's meeting. Got that tickling. All right, very good. Thank you, Miles. We are going to start this meeting, the first meeting of the month, as we do all meetings, with the supervisor's report, Miles, up on the big screen there. We'll focus for the folks at home on page three, if you will. This is a report for the period ending November 30th, 2019. We started the month with an opening balance of $7,581,866. We had various receipts, dispersments, mostly transfers, which is why we have those large figures. But we end the month with a balance of $7,105,038.46. You have, in addition to your monthly supervisor's report, some budget adjustments suggested by our bookkeeper and Conway. The largest of one being booking in increase to revenues associated with, and expenses associated with the grants that we've received for the additional charging station. And also, some of our capital projects are finally underway, and so we are moving money over into those accounts. In addition, you have the variance reports for the month. If you look at our balance remaining percent left, with one month in the fiscal year, we're in very good shape in our funds. Harry, we also have your transfer tax accumulation report that you like, and I'm happy to tell you that-
We broke the mil line, Mark.
Oh, yeah, a mil and a half. And we did receive our November check just yesterday. That was for almost $35,000, so you could hand out onto the number that's in front of you as well. So if there are no questions about the supervisor's report, I would entertain a motion to accept that and the budget adjustments as proposed.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We also have a clerk's report, Sue.
Town clerk wants the report for November 2019. Total shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, $967.48. Amount remitted to New York Ag and Markets for their spade and litter program, $55. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $67.50. And amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $1,158.52. For a total state and local revenue of $2,248.50. Next.
Very good. Thank you very much, Sue. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
So moved.
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Announcements. I just have one announcement, which is to let folks know that we will be having a drop in hours this Thursday from 12 to 5. If there are still folks out there who have any questions about our community choice aggregation program, just stop on by here at Town Hall any time that's your convenience between 12 and 5. On Thursday, we will have that up on our website. It's on the calendar already. If you'd like more information about the program, if you're watching this at home, feel free to go on our website, redhook.org. Also, you can go on the program administrator, Hudson Valley Community Power dot com to get any information that you need.
Is this 12th, December 12th?
That's December 12th. It's Thursday, 12 to 5. That's the only announcement I have. Does anybody else have any announcements?
I would say, because I'm not sure we talked about it at a previous meeting, to, I want to let people know that we will not be holding our January E-Way stay as we often have on Martin Luther King Junior Weekend in partnership with Bard and the Village. We've decided to try moving it to a slightly more temperate time of year, and so we're looking at possibly April around the Earth Day, Arbor Day celebration time. So we will send out a, like a notice on the website also, so people know, but I know that many people now kind of count on that day and save up their stuff, and I've been saving it, so just either hang tight, or we'll also have a little list. I think the CAC already has it out on social media of other places you can distribute your E-Ways until we have our next collection.
Hopefully in good weather. Thank you very much. And the hours for the holidays, just to let you know, Town Hall will be closed both December 24th and 25th for the Christmas holiday, and you would be advised to check our website for any other holidays coming up. Okay, very good. Public comments. Linda?
Always. I have two issues. The first being St. Margaret's Home.
Yeah.
We still do not have a committee reestablished for that. It's been about five years since we last had a committee working on it. We made a lot of progress, and if we just had some people interested in it, I think John Kuhn would probably go along with it. And I asked Paul if it, she doesn't want to do it, but maybe she knows of somebody. I would be willing to do it. So we just need a couple more people, and we need to get that going. The second issue is that electricity letter that came to each home. It was uncertified, came from the town, and I think it should have been made more important because of this season right now. Everybody's very busy, they probably just threw the letter aside. And the problem is that unless they opt out, they're in it. And I think the town should be promoting and working with a private company that should be of purpose. So those are my feelings on it.
Okay.
The other thing is, it was addressed only to my husband. I own the property too, so I want to see my name on these things.
No, Linda, I feel the same way regarding that second point, and that's actually, I believe, an issue with Central Hudson. It was addressed to whoever holds the account. So that's a Central Hudson issue, and that is impossible to get addressed, but go ahead and try if you can, because it's a Central Hudson thing. It's not accounting, just on that point.
Thank you very much, Linda. Okay. Any other public comments before we dive in? Thanks very much. Just very quickly, we would like to let you know, as we often do, some of our residents and their achievements, especially our scouts, our young scouts, members of our community. There was a ceremony for Michael Holdrin, who achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. That ceremony was this weekend, and Deputy Supervisor O'Neill was kind enough to attend on behalf of the board to acknowledge his accomplishments. In particular, I would just like to mention that Michael and his entire family have been very dedicated volunteers in our community. If you've gone to one of our veteran ceremonies, you will often see Michael or his sister playing either individually musical instruments or with the band. They've helped us out in the Red Hook Community Center, and so we really want to congratulate him on this achievement and to thank him for his project. And he did work at the community center, as a matter of fact, building those storage hangars, and so, Michael, well done. All right. Item number two is a resolution to approve the form of easement with Winnicky Land Trust. A while back, you received drafts of the easement, and we just to go formally approving the form before we can go ahead and work towards a joint closing with the land trust on the properties. Again, this is the 336 acres, I believe it is. All of the undeveloped lands of the Lyndon Inkers subdivision is going to be protected from development, and we are using community preservation funds as a match for the acquisition and for further restrictions as part of a conservation easement and public access easement. We're calling it the Soft Kale Project. And so we have resolution number-
115.
115, dated December 10th. And who would like to move that resolution?
So moved.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Number three is a resolution approving dog control housing and dog control services with the SPCA. And I thought maybe, Sarah, would you mind leading the discussion on this before we entertain the resolution?
Sure, I'm happy to talk about this. So this is the annual review of our standing contract with the SPCA to provide animal control services. I would say overall, we've been fairly happy with these service, and certainly haven't come up with anything that would serve our needs better. So looking at this contract, they don't appear, at least to my eye. Chris Shaw, please pardon me if I'm wrong, because I'm assuming you've gone over this even more carefully, but looking at it compared to last year's, I didn't see any significant changes other than their fee went up slightly. And I know we were concerned in the past because they had proposed putting more of the work of collecting fees onto the towns, and I'm glad to see that they have put that back.
Were you concerned about the prior draft?
Yeah.
And the changes at the urging of other communities as well as-
Yeah, that's right. So a lot of the other communities that contract with them, including us, pushed back on that, and so they've gone back to how it was in previous years, where the SPCA does the work of collecting those fees that residents might have for getting their dogs housed there when they get taken in. I don't have any concerns about this, and I think we should approve it.
I just want to thank the Supervisors and Mayors Association who took up this topic to correct those changes that would put that onus on us. Once again, joining together, much like our community choice aggregation provides some benefits in negotiations, and so they were instrumental. So I'd be happy to move resolution 106, dated December 10th. 116. That would be even better, wouldn't it? 116, dated December 10th, 2019, which is approving the housing agreement and animal control services between the town and the Dutchess County SPCA. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have a slight modification proposed for LWRP mapping project, the budget, and we need to approve a very small agreement with the biologist as part of that project. And so we have resolution number 117, which is authorizing the agreement with Hickory Creek Consulting LLC for services. It's a not to exceed $750 to do some mapping for us as part of this grant-funded project. We received the funds from Department of State, a grant we filed, seems like two and a half years ago or so, or three years ago, maybe? Yeah, that was a while ago. Okay. Any questions about this, folks? Paula was kind enough to include some information about the tweaking in the budget for the grant project.
I feel great about contracting with a woman in business. So I'm happy to see that.
All right. I move resolution 117, authorizing agreement with Hickory Creek Consulting LLC.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Very briefly, number five, employee health clerk-
Before you move on, I think that Paula would like you to move approval of the modified budget to be presented to the state for approval, because the state indicated that they needed your consent for the modification before they would review it. Is there just a motion, please?
Yeah, are we okay with that modification? You see the change that she's proposed here.
So moved.
Second?
Wait, excuse me. Can you repeat that again?
So a motion to approve a modification to the LWRP update grant budget-
Right.
-as presented by Paula.
Grant-
Well, actually, it's presented by Ann Conway. I take it back.
That's right. So the language in there for "so grant project budget modification", a motion to approve that was moved by Christine, seconded by-
I'll give you a go on the end.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number five, just very briefly, as we do each year, we get from our healthcare program advisors a list of the various options, the plans. And so I would ask you, all of you, I know Harry and Sarah, you won't be with us at the next meeting, but also if you have any thoughts and ideas about which plan would best suit our employees. I know that, you know, the goal we have is to ensure that there's no significant exposure to them. So if you would take some time and look this over, and we can tackle this at our next meeting, please.
Well, the next meeting next year.
Next year, yeah. So, but I'm still interested, Harry, in getting your input, Sarah as well, Christine and Bill, obviously. Let's be prepared, because we do need to make a decision in January about which plan we're going with. Okay. All right. Item number six is a Seeker Lead Agency Notice that was circulated to us by the clerk of the zoning board of appeals. And this is with regard to an application for an area variance at 7211 Waldemar Road. That would be approximately diagonal from Anafur's parcel or across from Conway's. It's just off the corner, the southwest corner. This is an application for a helipad. And so, as required by law, this ZVA is circulating to get our input on who we believe should be lead agency. And I have some thoughts about this, and Christine, I wonder if you also have some thoughts that you might be able to share with us as the prior chair of the planning board.
Do they say why they want to designate themselves as lead agency?
Well, the only board that has a pending application was the zoning board of appeals. The applicant applied only to the ZVA so far, even though in order to get the project approved, they will ultimately have to get approvals from the planning board as well as the town board for the applications. There were different applications that applied to the planning board and also the town board, but they haven't submitted those applications yet, as far as I know.
Yeah, my concern is that usually, because the use is, or help or use is allowed with special permit approval in this zone, and that means that's to go through the planning board. So traditionally, you apply to the planning board, which begins its review, and then if things come up, like you need a variance, then the applicant moves to the ZVA to get that done, or, you know, answered one way or another. They don't get a variance, then that could stop the project. Or if they do, then they come back to the planning board, and then they complete the site plan review. So I'm just confused as to why this went to the ZVA first, and we would be doing Seeker before, you know, without including the planning board step. So usually, we try to do them all together so it's smoother and faster for the applicant, so.
Yeah.
When we did, when we did the airstrip over in, what's his name, Forum, we had to go through the state. There's a department in the state that gets very involved in it.
You mean the one at Greg Farm?
At Greg Farm, yeah. And the state had all sorts of requirements in terms of sight lines-
Right.
And the heights of elements-
Right.
Adjacent to the fields and all sorts of things.
I don't think the Seeker is being circulated to the state, however. It's just the notices for the planning board, town board. Oh, it is, it is Department of Transportation, so maybe-
Right.
No, that's a good point.
I don't think they would usually take lead agency.
They would not take lead agency on this.
They circulate it, but they typically wouldn't.
You know, this requires a site plan review, so to me, logically, it would make more sense to have the planning board take lead agency. The planning board is well versed in doing the secret review. The ZVA hardly ever does it. I can't remember the last time the ZVA did a secret analysis. So that would be, my inclination is to actually deny the ZVA's request to be lead agency and-
Well, you don't really deny it, you just don't consent to it, yeah.
Right, so what, the process would be that-
I understand.
Right, I understand, but yeah.
That's it. I'm using a layman's-
So we won't agree to it?
Yeah. To deny the request and to actually let them know that the planning board- Well, we have to do that now. We're in the 30-day circulation period. And I think that, you know, no board does a secret review for site plans like the planning board does. They do it on a regular basis. They've got a lot of experience, and so that would be my recommendation.
Do we have to get their agreement to that?
Well, ultimately, the planning board would be the one to say, to stick up their hand and say, we also, if the planning board-
Because this was circulated to them also.
That's right, and they had a meeting, but they, the meeting was canceled because of the storm, so, right. Well, cheers.
They want it here tomorrow.
But they will have to take it up at their meeting, so.
So how's this go again? We do not agree, and we-
You can make a run.
How many we suggest that-
You can make a run.
Suggest the planning board be the lead agency.
Right.
Well, they have to agree with for the site plan anyway, so why would we deny them the opportunity to do the Seeker? Do you like it?
Oh, yeah.
Harry makes sense?
Oh, yes, sure.
Sarah?
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Okay.
So we need a motion on that?
Yeah, we have a motion, right.
We do a motion, I'll make a motion, agree.
That we do not consent, the town board, the town board does not consent, and we wish that the planning board serve as lead agents. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To unanimous, thank you very much. Authorizing public bids to ADA accessible vans. It's, I never thought it would be so hard to get two things, but it's turning out to be harder than I expected. So our mini bid through OGS, well, we tried to piggyback on OGS procurement. We didn't receive any bids, so now we have to do our own procurement going after the-
You skipped seven, Barbara. You skipped seven.
Oh, thank you. We'll come back to seven.
Okay.
Thank you, Sue. So this is just simply a resolution to authorize us to go out to bid, or a number eight, Harry, for the two electric vans. It's very simple, but we need to do this quickly because the state Trump voucher incentive fund monies are out there to match the federal money we've already received, to match the commitment that the Ascensio- I can never say his name correctly.
Costeanso.
Costeanso Foundation has committed to it. So it's resolution 112-
18.
Dating? Dated December 10th, authorizing the solicitation of public bids for two electric vans regarding enhanced mobility. And it is moved by Christine Kane, seconded by Bill O'Neill. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Number seven, thank you, Sue, going back to that. It's a resolution authorizing approving two change orders related to Red Hook West. One is a minor one, just a change in some plantings. Some of the neighbors actually prefer to have smaller plantings, not larger ones, so they wouldn't affect their view, and frankly, wouldn't impact the view from the public roadway of the mountains and so on and so forth. So it's denser, smaller trees, no larger rooms.
But they're more expensive?
They're a little more, well, the quantity is more.
More is more.
But obviously, different implications for maintenance, there are not large trees and risk. That's change order one. Change order two, our engineers explained to us that in the communication that you've already received, that the soil characteristics for the backstop is to be built is more sandy, and so they need to alter significantly the backstop foundation and go further down. That includes additional concrete, rebar, cage, and longer posts. That's a significant expense. We did also make a change at the request of the Rec Commission to remove the outfield warning track for maintenance reasons, so that had a positive benefit. We modified the dugout pad to be something that's provided in the future by the town, but made a larger pad itself. And so the change order in that case is $55,000. Still falls within the budget that we have appropriated. Here's the backup information sent to us by the engineers. This would be resolution number 119, authorizing change orders one and two for the town of Red Hook Recreation Park Phase One West project. And who would like to move the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. A request from our water board to authorize the appropriation of monies from the Water District Unreserved Fund Balance. This is agenda item number nine. Very short and strict resolution, number 120. Hank has asked for a transfer of $30,000 from the Unreserved Fund to the Water District Reconstruction Reserve Fund, planning for the future. planning for the future. And I so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are moving right along nicely. We have committee and board reports this evening. The first one is a senior services committee report. The committee has met twice this fall, on December fourth and September thirtieth. They welcomed two new members, Johanna Moore and Connie Barisi, and they have a couple of also prospective members, so that's very good news. They're discussing more membership recruitment. They want to revive the quarterly senior bulletin. They're working towards the 2020 Senior Expo and the creation of an online presence in the community. That's very good to hear. The next meeting for that committee is January eighth at ten AM at Town Hall. And if you're interested in serving on that committee, they ask that you call seven five eight four six two four. If you're interested in serving on any of our committees, they are listed on our town's website, and we have opening, and we would welcome your interest. Okay, Bill, ZBA.
Well, the ZBA met on November thirteenth. The first matter discussed was the heliport that we've already referred to tonight, and that matter was adjourned for determination on lead agency and seeker review. And that will be adjourned then to another date in the future. There was a review also of an application, Charles Hayman, up on Lasher Road for multifamily dwelling, and Charles wasn't present, so after the discussion by the ZBA, it was agreed that the matter would be adjourned until the owner of the property could be present, so that's been done, so that was also adjourned. And we would, they're going to meet with him and answer questions before they set a public hearing. And the third and last matter discussed was solar energy discussion. And that, after the discussion and public hearing, is scheduled for December eleventh on that application. And the next CBA meeting is December eleventh, tomorrow.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, the application on West Curly Corners, I think the folks at home may be interested, especially if they live in that area. That is for a wind turbine, a hundred and twenty feet in height, and that's on the old Hermann's farm.
To complement all their nice statues.
Always says solar is the good idea.
Okay, Harry, we have a very lengthy, as always, Recreation Commission report.
There's two of them.
Two of them. Good luck, but could you cherry pick for us some highlights that.
Well, one of them is a list of everything that's been done on St. Margaret's. It's extensive, and the place looks, it looks like a the kind of home we'd all like to have right now, if you don't go inside of it. And this report of what's being done is wrapping up the maintenance of the various fields. The pickleboard, ball court have completely finished. All we have to do is put the sign up, which we'll do in the spring. And everything is basically wrapped up in the field, and now construction is started, so the, neither park is really usable now until construction's finished.
That's right, and thank you, Harry. And yes, we want to apologize to the folks at home because the parklands are in a state of construction, but also to let you know if you live up near Tivoli, they culvert there on Stony Brook Road because of the weather, once again, not cooperating with the plans. It's looking more and more like that project will not be completed, but we certainly know it won't be paved until late spring. So a few more months now without access on that road, and unfortunately, there's very little we can do about that. So, thank you for your patience. Sarah, Tree Preservation Commission report.
Okay. As usual, Tree Commission has been busy. There was a nature area cleanup at Mill Road School, completed by committee members. They finished their plantings on the south side of Picture Lane with two more trees, and will finish the north side in the spring after they remove a large diseased maple. They have been working with a town engineer on a grant, application that would provide trees for the Red Hook Park, right? We looked at that last meeting. Do you know, how's that going? Did it very good submit, or is it submitting next?
Supposedly, the engineer submitted it.
Yeah, so it's been submitted now, right?
We did this in twenty-five days, we had more meetings, and it got done.
Man, power team over there, amazing. Let's see, okay, so they're already busy turning their attention to Arbor Day, and starting to plan for that, and working on a Tree City application to keep us in Tree City's good books. And then they've been talking to the D E C about their concerns about possible roundup usage on the sides of the state roads in our community. Do you want to tell us a little more about the letter that your committee received from the D E C in response?
It was a generic letter that, you know, this is what they normally do. I suggested that we get the Environmental Management Council involved in this. Many years ago, when the county was spraying DDT along the bus routes where kids were standing, we got that to stop. So I'm thinking that that's the best avenue right now. Neither the CAC nor the Tree Preservation Commission can actively get something done with that DDT.
I mean, we can't be the only community that wouldn't like to know what they're spraying, so I think you're right to go to the county level and try to get the Environmental Management Committee into it, yeah.
Along the road, it's roundup.
Well, that's what the concern is.
Yeah.
Nitting into the waterways.
Into the waterways. It is roundup for sure.
Okay.
Want to do the dog control report?
Would you please?
Sure. I thought we reported on October already, but I'm happy to report on it again. So in October, we had zero dangerous dog complaints, one loose dog, and one useless dog, and no notes of special interest. So I'm sure we'll get a nice fat report on November, December very soon. Usually, those are quieter months, so.
November's not quite. They have some dangerous dog matters.
I heard that, yeah.
Two of them, yeah. Okay, Harry, Water District, please.
Okay. Basically, all's well in the Water District. The well level is right on target. We've done some hydrant flushing, and if your water was gray or brown for a few hours, that was water flushing. And the radio link for the pumps is being worked on. Pump line has to be checked out, and the probe meters have to be replaced. And all of our measurements are great.
Very good, thank you, Harry. Bill, police report, please.
Well, the November report by the Village of Red Hook Police Department shows a hundred and twenty-eight total incidents for the reporting period, a total of ten arrests made, and a total of seventy-three tickets issued in November. For December, the Village of Red Hook Police Department report is a total incidence for the reporting period, a hundred and fourteen, but of course, it's only the middle of December, but for this year so far, it's a hundred and fourteen. Total arrests are five, and total tickets issued are twenty-eight.
Very good. That's all we have. Anyone else want to make a report?
Well, I didn't know that the, I mean, the intermunicipal task force report, I'll just make it orally, but we've met twice in November, twice, and we will be meeting twice in December because of the holidays, but each of these meetings has been taken over by discussion, continuing discussion on the issue of the air B and Bs in the town of Red Hook and what's happening around us, what's going on at the county level, the state level, the international level, actually. And the proposed language that the task force has been discussing to be presented to the town board, but it's still a continuing dialogue.
Thanks, anyone else?
Being continued in January.
Thank you, Bill. If there are no other committee and board reports, we do have some correspondence. Eric Axelson, who's the director down at Department of Finance, Real Property, and he just writes to us again about our Board of Assessment Review members and their terms and their educational requirements. We do have an opening on that board, and so if you folks here or at home, if you know somebody who has some background, they would be helpful on the Board of Assessment Review. We would appreciate you reaching out to them to see if there's some interest. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we go into attorney-client at the conclusion of this meeting, but before doing so, it is a very sad evening for some of us up here tonight because it is the last meeting of two of our town board members. And I don't think that we can thank either one of them enough. Harry, I'll start with you, just because you're odometer here in Town Hall, it's higher than most. You're concluding three terms, twelve years of really terrific service to your community. If folks don't know, if you're somewhat early or recent to this community, Harry has been integral to a lot of the land use, decision-making, the zoning, and the overall planning for the future, and so I think the results of your work, Harry, speak for themselves. But we appreciate everything that you've done, and I wonder, did you want to take a minute or two, maybe even three, now that we moved along quickly?
Yeah, thank you, and I will say it's been, actually, a pleasure. It's from time to time a bit of angst in being involved in government, and that's part of any job. And, but the rewards of being involved in the governance of this town has been, has been great. It's very satisfying work from my point of view, and the help of the community and support of the community has also been great, so I hope that the trajectory that we've set in the last few years continues into the next several decades. I'll be watching.
We know, we know you will, Harry. Sarah, it's a little different for you because we're hoping you're just taking a pause, and that you'll be back with us on a frequent basis. You're living proof that it makes absolute sense to have new blood and energy, and you branch that with intelligence that really has paid off for all of us, so we really appreciate all the work that you've done. There was a lot of perspiration along with your inspiration, and, you know, many of the projects that you've worked on have advanced and been successes. So, thank you very much, and unfortunately, there's no time for you to say anything this evening, but thanks for coming. No, go ahead, what was it?
Thank you, that's very, very kind of you to say. Well, I would echo a lot of Harry's sentiments. It's been very satisfying, and you know, I started out at these meetings as a reporter, and at planning board meetings and all kinds of meetings like that, not just in Red Hook, and so I keen to the work. Maybe slightly more prepared than some for what it would be like, at least from the public perspective, you know, and at the same time thinking like, oh, if they can do that, I can, maybe I can do that, you know, and kind of, you know, realize, you know, once you're in a position like this, you know, how much work it is, how difficult it can be sometimes, and so I'm very grateful for all the people that I've served with on the board, and the people like Chris and the planning board and all the volunteers. Linda, all the volunteers and town employees right here, all of you, everybody at Town Hall, you know, it's just a really great town to work in this way and to be a volunteer in, and I'm so happy that that part, that I was pretty sure I knew to be true, is definitely true, you know, after this four-year term. So, yeah, I definitely think of it as a pause. I leave feeling really happy with what we've accomplished and looking forward to doing more in the future and continuing to be a volunteer and supporting all of your work and coming and giving you an earful when I want to. I will be around, don't worry, Linda, I'm not going anywhere.
I need somebody else out here.
I know, you need a buddy sometimes, so I will, like Harry, I will be watching and listening. But I'm really happy with the work that we've accomplished, and I feel like we're in a really good spot in Red Hook, and it's, you know, everywhere I go, I'm always telling people like, it's important to be involved, it like, public service is something that you won't regret being a part of, but also just struck by how wonderful in Red Hook in particular, I think, our partnerships and just the way we all work together. You know, it really is a great place to be.
So you may be back, right?
I'll definitely be around, and I will be back, I think, yeah. Maybe not this, but we'll see, but, yeah. I'm pretty young, you know, so I feel like I'll probably.
Careful.
Probably got blast, we'll see.
Well, thank you, and we know what a sacrifice it is for both of you and all of you up here, so we greatly appreciate it. We look forward to our new town board members, Jacob Testa and Bill Hamel, and we look forward to seeing you all in the new year, and thank you very much for joining us at home and here in person. To find out more about what's going on in your community, log on to redhook.org and click on notify me, and then you'll get notices regarding all kinds of things in Red Hook. So, again, good evening, thank you very much. Did you want to make some public comments before you?
I just wanted to say that we often forget our highway department, especially with these past two storms. They do an excellent job, and we can't say enough how great they are.
Thank you, thank you, Linda. Thanks, we appreciate it. Thank you, Theresa, and your crew for all the good work.
I don't do it alone. I have a great crew.
So, okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go into attorney-client. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for joining. Good night, all, happy holidays.